Doris Ann earned her academic degrees at Columbia University. Her career as a reference librarian and library manager included working at Columbia, Boston, and Harvard Universities. A 45-year resident of Auburn Dale, she's a co-manager of Auburn Dale's Harvard Fund, and she was a founding member of Vengeance Six. Randy Block has lived in Newton since 1990. He was active in the Williams Street PTO and taught religious education at his Unitarian Universalist church. He chaired the Neighborhood Riverside Committee in 2018 and helped negotiate the compromise plan that the City Council adopted unanimously.
Well, as both of you have been informed, the idea of this debate is to fairly apportion time, but to have this be as conversational as possible. And as moderator, I'll be actively engaged in moving the process along. And I'll go back and forth between the two of you as to which one of you will get to answer each question first. So we'll start with Doris. And what are your top three priorities and why?
Well, housing is a top priority for me because housing is pretty basic to human life, and we need to make sure that we have housing that works for everybody in Newton. And climate action, of course, is extremely important because we're facing a lot of challenges with flooding, and we really need to pay attention to how we're going to mitigate climate changes that are happening around us. And thirdly, I am concerned about making sure that our schools are well-supported, that our teachers are well-supported.
Thanks. Thanks. You'll get used to it, Doris. Randall, your top three priorities, please.
Thanks for that question, Marjorie. My top three priorities are based on what I'm hearing when I've knocked on almost every door in this ward: development, schools, and constituent service. Development is a concern because it's the major issue being considered by the City Council right now, and the proposal before the City Council goes far beyond what the state is requiring for this 8,330 units, which I'm sure we'll talk about some more later. Schools, parents are very concerned about the learning loss that their children have experienced due to COVID. They're concerned about the current teacher negotiations and the uncertainty regarding that. So I definitely support collective bargaining, and we'll get back to constituent service another time.
And as a matter of fact, you're not going to have to wait long because certainly the, as far as the zoning issue is concerned, because that may be the most compelling issue facing voters during this election season. So there's a general understanding that there are two plans going forward: one, the state mandated goal of 8,330 new residential units by right, and then the City Council's village overlay district to reinvigorate our city centers. And I'm sure that you know that over a period of the changing in the plans and the various iterations, that the numbers have been as high as 15,000 and as low as 7,300 to 9,300. And with all of this confusion, Randall, you go first with this. You said that you feel that it's too much. Can you elaborate on it? And what are you comfortable going forward with?
It's very interesting that you talk about confusion of numbers. I agree with you, there's confusion over numbers. Why is that? Whose responsibility is it to collect numbers on something this important and present it to us? I think the City Council has a responsibility to ask those questions. I think the Planning Department and the mayor have a responsibility to answer those questions, and as far as I know, they haven't. So I think it's very unfortunate that there is confusion around all this. The state has made it very clear where the 8,330 units come from. It's a 25% increase in our current housing stock, but obviously, the plan before the City Council goes far beyond that.
Doris Ann, are you comfortable with the plan before the City Council? Or the two plans going, that are before the City Council?
I am comfortable. I actually am a housing advocate and have been for the last 10 years or so. And housing is very basic human right. We need more housing, and housing is something that will help our businesses, our businesses, our downtown business, small businesses. Here in Auburn Dale, we have examples of businesses who need a lot more customers in order for them to thrive. Our schools are losing population. We need more families. We need more kids. So yes, I think we need more housing. We need various kinds of housing that will, you know, that will serve people at various income levels.
Well, you lead right into another question because a major concern is a lack of affordable housing. And how do you feel that the current plans address the needs specifically for affordable housing? And what's your definition of affordable? Let's see. Doris Ann, I think you're starting on this one.
Well, there are lots of different definitions of affordable, and often you will hear a certain percentage of the area median income as 80% being kind of average. But then there are many people who live below, at incomes below that average. And so we need, that's why I'm saying that we need, we need housing at various price points and various sizes. We need different sizes and types of housing. We need more multifamily housing, and that will help with our school enrollment, and it will help with the environment and...
Okay. Thank you for adhering to the clock. I really appreciate that. Randall, what's your sense of the city's need for affordable housing? How many units would seem to be necessary? And do you think that the plans now provide for an adequate number of affordable units?
This issue of affordable housing comes up a lot from people who live in Ward Four. It's a high priority for them. It's a high priority for me. It's important to keep in mind, though, that this state legislation that we're talking about says nothing about affordability. There is no affordability requirements. There is no more money from the state in order to subsidize housing. I think that's very unfortunate. One thing I want to say about affordable housing as a general topic, I think of it as housing for low-income families. This is the moral imperative that we face as a society and as a city. I point to the Armory Development as being a great example of preserving buildings and creating more housing that will be occupied by low-income families. And I think we need to do more of those state-city partnerships.
Doris, to what extent has the housing that has already been built, say, for example, in Austin Street and those buildings along there? To what extent have, and there have been some very big, there's a big apartment unit in Woburn, do you think that affordable units are coming along with those developments?
By law, they need to, if they're over a certain number of units, by law, they need to have a certain percentage of units offered at affordable levels that are specified by the city. So yes, they will have, the larger developments will have affordable units because they're required to.
Randall, you, something that I read indicated, you've spoken favorably about the conversion of Newton Armory for affordable housing and the need to identify other state-owned properties for such opportunities. Do you have any specific state-owned properties in mind? Or is this kind of theoretical?
Let me say this about our housing policy in Newton, such as it is. We have gotten into a trap of linking our affordable housing expansion with for-profit development. Yes, we have an inclusionary zoning ordinance, and that's terrific. Developers can buy out of it. They can just pay into a fund instead of creating the housing. And also, this 85-15 split, we're never going to become more diverse community if that's what we're stuck with. That's why the 100% housing approach for sizes like the Armory is a really good thing to try and develop more and more of. I'd love to sit down with the state and go over all the properties that they control in Newton. It would be a very interesting process.
Doris, do you have any other ideas on conversion of state-owned property?
We're very lucky to have gotten the Armory for a dollar. I'm not sure how many other state properties we would get for a dollar. I have been inside that Armory, and it's like a shooting gallery. So there is a lot of toxic stuff in there. It's not a place that's suitable for families until it's really been cleaned up. So it's a pretty expensive process to get that property in a state where it can be used by families, which I think that's going to happen, and I think it will be great. But it's not an easy thing.
I'd like to hear from you, your sense of traffic impacts when you build large housing properties. Randall, Randy, excuse me.
Well, traffic is one of those issues that comes up over and over again when I talk to people in Ward Four. If you try to get through Auburn Dale Square at certain times of the day, it's going to take you quite a while. So I think we have to weigh that when we think about what kind of additional housing, what kind of additional construction we're going to allow in this city. Making something that's barely tolerable now, more congested, I'm not sure that that's a very smart way to plan going forward. So we need to do a much better job managing traffic, and we need to do a careful job planning for how traffic is going to be affected by any changes that we make.
Doris, do you have any thoughts on traffic impacts? Either directly from the building or just in general in Auburn?
Well, we definitely have a lot of traffic, can have a lot of traffic. But one of the ways that traffic can be managed is with the multifamily housing. When you have multifamily housing that's near the village centers, then people don't have to use their car necessarily to go to the drugstore or the grocery store or other places where they would want to go. So I think that village center principle of having housing in village centers really supports the visit, it supports the businesses in the village centers, but it also cuts down on traffic when people live close enough to actually be able to walk.
Could I comment on that? We're talking about increasing the population of Newton. 15%, 20%, 25%? Who knows? But it's going to add to what we have now. Adding more people in the village centers who can walk to stores, that's a wonderful idea, but it's not going to reduce the amount of traffic that the current population produces.
Doris, do you want to rebut that, or should I?
Well, there might be some people who would like to live in those village centers if they had the opportunity, if there was housing there that they could move to, especially a lot of people I know who are downsizing, have trouble finding places to live, and living in a walkable village center would be ideal for them if they could find it, if we could produce it.
I'd like to ask each of you what you think are the best prospects in your ward for, of specific areas for more affordable housing. Doris?
Oh, gosh, I have not been going around looking at potential sites, but I'm sure there are many. I would love to take that on as an assignment. But I think, you know, we have some stores that are not very tall. We have, I think that there are parking lots around that maybe there could be some buildings there instead of parking lots that are mostly empty right in Auburn Dale Square. Yeah, I think that there is, it wouldn't be too hard to find those places.
Randy, your thoughts?
I live in Newton Lower Falls, which has 499 housing units, 83 of which are subsidized and qualify for the state affordable housing inventory. That's 17% of Newton Lower Falls. That's the kind of neighborhood we are. We like it that way. And I think that other neighborhoods need to develop similar strategies for trying to reach that level of housing affordability. I think it's great.
Speaking of village centers, there's broad support for rebuilding our village centers, optimally for small businesses, local businesses. How would you do that? And given the cost of construction, therefore rentals, how would you keep out chain stores from taking over the village centers when new development comes in? Randall? Randy, sir?
That's okay. I think that's a great question, the way you framed it. I've talked to small business owners, and they're not very excited about this village center overlay plan for the exact reason that you're asking that question. New construction is expensive. If new construction is built, their rents go up, and that's the real key to supporting small businesses. Yes, they'd love more foot traffic, of course, who wouldn't? But the key to their continued existence is rental income. Just ask Newtonville Cameron. They used to be in Newtonville, and where do you think they are now? They're in Waltham because they couldn't afford the new rents. And when you tear down a building, you've got to relocate, and you're not going to come back.
Doris Ann?
Well, I wasn't talking about tearing down any buildings, but we can renovate buildings. We actually do have in Auburn Dale some spaces where a building should be built, where there are holes right now. And our, you know, we are a walkable village. People do walk downtown, and I think that's important for our local businesses. My daughter started one of those local businesses, Fred Song Bakery, and they would love to have more people walking by. So would Just Next Door, which is another small business in Auburn Dale Center. They would love to have more people coming by and stopping in.
What remaining green spaces are there in Ward Four? And what would you do to preserve them? Start with Doris Ann this time, move on to Randy.
Well, we have a fabulous lion's field, and we have trails, walking trails in the forest near Lion's Field. I've spent a lot of time there when I had my own dog, and now I spend time there with my grand dog. Their wonderful trails, and it's very woodsy. It's just fabulous.
Randy?
Well, I think the big opportunity are these trails along the Charles River. Some exist, and some need to be improved. This is state-owned property. The state should really finance the renovation and access for bicycles and pedestrians. Ward Four is very fortunate to have an awful lot of green space in the cove all along the Charles River. It's a very attractive place to live.
Digging down into the issue of green, how would you beef up our local ordinance to protect the existing tree canopy? You know, there's a lot of regulatory apparatus around it, but I wonder what your thoughts are on that, Randy?
The city's tree ordinance is currently being considered in committee. I am a strong supporter of strengthening that ordinance. Newton has a reputation for having a weak tree protection policy. I've seen firsthand what happens. I won't mention names, but in my particular street, somebody just cut down all their trees. They said they were going to add an addition to their house, and then they never did. And the tree, the city arborist came by, and there was absolutely nothing he could do. There needs to be higher cost through our permit system of taking down trees if they're diseased, if they're damaged, that's one thing. But just saying, I want to take down trees, these are a community asset, and we need to protect them.
Doris Ann?
I love trees. We need trees. And yes, I will, in my walk, sometimes come across a tree that's not healthy at all, that's ready to be cut down because it's rotting. And I will report that to the City Forestry Department. And I just reported something to them the other day. It was a tree that was being overcome by vines. It was just totally covered in vines. So yeah, we need to take care of our trees. I grew up in northern New Hampshire, which is tree country.
Also snow country.
Yes, true.
How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in the city? Newton's Leers proposed encouraging residents to use public transport, transport bikes or walk by reducing parking requirements and redesigning streets for pedestrians and cyclists. Would you support these measures, or would you pursue a different approach if elected? Randy?
Well, of course, the city is taking a very proactive role in encouraging people to walk and bicycle, and there are safety issues that need to be dealt with, and I think we're going to have to work those through. I think the use of public transit is another story. We see headlines all the time about safety issues on the MBTA system. The federal government has come down very hard on the system, and to think that people are going to locate and use the current MBTA Green Line system that goes through Newton in a significant way, I think that's just fantasy. I wish that weren't the case. This has been an underfunded system for years, and I don't see that changing anytime soon.
Doris Ann?
I have quite a different view of it. In fact, part of the reason that we moved here to Auburn Dale is because there was an abundance of public transit. My husband was blind, and in order for him to travel independently to get to work, he needed public transit. So we have an express bus that goes right by our house. We have the commuter rail that's walkable distance away. We have the Green Line that's walkable distance away from our house. So I'm very much a fan of public transit, and I have to say that my kids and grandkids, before they were old enough to drive, also use that public transit a lot and still do sometimes.
So Newton has some of the worst pothole streets in the metropolitan area, and that's bad for cars and pedestrians and cyclists and so forth. What would you specifically do to amp up that program for safe streets? Doris Ann, you want to go first?
Well, we certainly need to get rid of the potholes. We need to address the potholes. And yes, there are some out there, and it happens every spring. That needs to be, perhaps more money needs to be put into that department that fixes the roads and sidewalks. Yeah, it's not just the roads, it is the sidewalks, too. Sidewalks have gouges in them that can be dangerous for anybody who's walking along and not looking down, as I was one day. And so, yeah, those definitely need maintenance.
Randy, is this just a question of money, or is it management as well?
I think that you've touched on an issue of constituent service that is, that comes up a lot. People complain about the sidewalks, they complain about potholes. The city does have a system for evaluating all these things, and I have a feeling I'm going to get to know them very well if I'm elected. Being a linkage between the constituents who have issues and the city departments that are supposed to respond to these issues, that's a very important role for the City Council to play. So that's, I mean, the potholes have to be filled, and maybe there is a funding issue. That's one of the things we'll just have to explore.
Well, speaking of money, the city has about $40 million in surplus funds. We don't have to go into the source of that. But the mayor proposed putting a large portion into new operations booster stabilization fund. Just this past week, the City Council voted her down on her proposal. What's the dispute here? And if you had control over that money, what would you propose to do? And I think it's Randy who is first this time.
As I understand some of the concerns, it is whether the school system is being adequately funded right now. And I do think there are questions about whether teacher aide positions have been fully restored, whether there are special programs to help kids who've suffered learning loss because of COVID. That's something we really need to properly fund now. I think that's very much on the City Council's mind. It would be on my mind, too. I give the mayor credit. She's attempting to deal with school funding issues as well as the deficit in our retirement fund. So I appreciate the effort that she's made, and I look forward to the City Council working with the mayor to come up with a more flexible plan that they can all agree on.
Doris Ann, do you have a sense of what your priorities would be in dealing with those monies?
Well, I definitely am a fan of fully funding the schools. And I know that there are some staff now who feel that they're not being fully supported. And that, to me, is one of our highest priorities. I think the schools, having excellent teachers and having excellent facilities, those are some of the values that Newton residents are, I think, are very important. I've had that mentioned to me a number of times as I've been knocking on doors.
Well, digging down even more deeply into finances, one question that never goes away has to do with our so-called OPEB liability, the funding for post-retirement health benefits. Are you satisfied that we're on the right track in terms of how much we're providing? And what are a couple of additional things that you would do to put the city on a firmer financial footing? Randy?
Interesting question. A long-term challenge for this city is its finances. We don't get a very large percentage from commercial property. It's about 15%. And the residential inhabitants of Newton have a way of demanding a lot of services from schools to roads. We need to do a better job on economic development to try and figure out what's the best way forward for Newton financially. Sometimes people talk about payment in lieu of taxes. It's interesting. It's state law which allows large nonprofits like hospitals and universities to be exempt from property tax, and perhaps that law ought to be reexamined. We have a very... to be exempt from property tax. And perhaps that law ought to be reexamined. We have a very strong legislative delegation. Maybe it's time to put them to work for Newton.
I'd like to move on to Doris Ann on that, but aren't the pilot tack, uh, pilot payments negotiated between the city and the nonprofit?
They are under current law, but, but that's only because the current law exempts them from paying taxes.
Doris Ann, what is your sense of, of things that would put the city on a more solid financial footing?
We, I mean, we can always raise taxes, I suppose. I mean, that's always something that you don't want to do, but maybe sometimes you have to do it. Um, and I am in favor of paying my fair share. Um, um, but I, I think that there could be a variety of, of uh, choices made by the mayor who makes these economic decisions, really. Um, and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing more about this from her and uh, what the city council is going to do about it, if anything. So.
I wanted to ask you about what you think that the city of Newton can do to amp up National Grid's efforts to address the gas leaks throughout the city. I mean, nobody wants to see a tragedy such as that that occurred in North Andover with a national, with, with a, a gas company explosion four years ago. So, uh, what can, what can the city do and what can you do as a city councillor? Um, Doris Ann?
Well, I'm not exactly sure. I know that Mothers Out Front has been working on this issue for quite some time now. Um, going around and spotting all of those gas leaks that are sitting there and spewing out. Um, it's really a problem we have to address. Um, and, you know, maybe the city council and the mayor need to come down a little more heavily on the utilities companies that are responsible.
Randy?
Well, uh, Doris Ann and I can agree that it is the utility companies that are responsible for repairing this. Perhaps the um, toll-free number that is available to citizens to report gas leaks should be publicized better. It's very important that we all understand uh, the dangers of gas leaks and that we um, respond when they come to our attention.
I mean, it clearly uh, raises the issue of our ongoing dependence on fossil fuel. The, the uh, city is uh, interested in regulating future hookups to gas. How do you, how do you feel about that? And it, either one of you can jump in on that.
Well, I.
Doris Ann?
Go ahead, Dor.
I'm, I'm very, very much in favor of getting away from fossil fuels. And I've been doing that rather systematically over the last few years in my own home. Um, so um, I have pretty much electrified the whole place and have solar panels. Um, and if there were more incentives, there might be more people who would do the same. And I think that, that could help us if that became a campaign of the city government.
Randy, how do you feel about that?
I, I think Newton's doing a pretty good job about publicizing and incentivizing shifting away from fossil fuels, requiring it for new, for new construction and enabling people where it's feasible to put up solar panels. One of the things I want to mention is that the effects of climate change are gonna be felt here, whatever we do. Um, there was a uh, flood in August that totaled all the cars that were parked in the um, city's library parking lot. Um, that's a warning sign. That's gonna happen again, and our stormwater drainage system needs to be evaluated and we need to up our game. That's um, otherwise, our basements and our neighborhoods are all gonna be in jeopardy of flooding.
Are there any other specific steps that either one of you would recommend? Or we can, we can move on. Uh, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in Newton? And we're looking for some very specific ideas. Randy?
Listening to people is in my DNA. I've done it all my life. And knocking on all these doors, it's really an education. Certainly, there are things like holding office hours and writing newsletters. I, I'm a strong believer in neighborhood organizations. I'm on the board of the Lower Falls Improvement Association. Um, we listen to neighbors all the time and try and get them involved in various civic issues. I, I think that all neighborhoods really need that kind of organizing. And I would support that as a city councillor.
Doris Ann?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in Newton? In, in very specific ways?
As I've been going around knocking on doors, I've had a lot of conversations and a lot of opportunities to actually address some of the issues that people have. Um, I'm not a councillor yet, but there are things that I can just do as a citizen. And I have done things like, um, you know, vines that are overtaking, overtaking the trees in a city parking lot. Uh, the forestry department is going out and help that, get rid of those vines. Um, and so I, I, I think that, you know, I, as a reference librarian, what I did for the bulk of my career was to every day, talk with people, try to help them solve their problems. And that's, that's exactly what I would do as a city councillor as well.
Uh, there was a time when the, when City Hall used to send out a questionnaire once a year to all households to assess the level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction with various uh, city services and other aspects of living in Newton. Would you push to have that reactivated? Randy?
It's, it, it's really important to listen to what our constituents say. And I'm afraid that I have to tell you, they don't feel they're being heard. There was a Washington Street survey. They didn't want buildings more than three stories tall. What are we looking at now? Five stories, maybe what's called five and a half stories, which is really six stories. Um, so yes, there ought to be a reactivation of surveys like that. But we really need to commit ourselves to listening and, and responding positively to what our constituents are telling us.
Doris, anything that you want to add to that about, or the, react to the possibility of resurrecting that questionnaire?
Uh, well, it, it never hurts to get input. I mean, people's input that they can give through a questionnaire when they have time to sit down and think about it as they're filling out that questionnaire, that's helpful. I would, I would, I would love to have that happen from time to time.
Uh, we've promised each one of you a, an opportunity to pose a question to your opponent. So, uh, let's start with you, Doris Ann, and then we'll go to Randy. What question would you like to ask Randy?
Um, Randy, my understanding is um, from a previous conversation we had is that you're very, um, you feel that green space is very important, as do I. Um, so I'm um, wondering about your support of lack of, or lack of support for a, a trail that was proposed to be built through Lower Falls.
It's a, it's a very localized issue in Newton Lower Falls. And I'm puzzled as to why you think I'm opposed to this bicycle trail. The only discussions I've had regarding it are how controversial it was in Lower Falls. I live a block away from where I think you're referring to. And this trail um, was opposed by just about everybody who abutted on that trail. I, I think we were all very surprised in Lower Falls about how controversial it was. And people, I think, regretted um, how controversial it became. So my, I never really took a position on it because I wasn't an immediate abutter.
Randy, do you have a question for Doris Ann?
Yes, I do. Doris Ann, you supported the proposed new city charter in twenty seventeen that would have eliminated the ward councillor seats on the city council. And now you're seeking to fill the very seat that you voted to eliminate. How do you explain this?
Well, I didn't change the system, so now I'm going with the system.
Let me, let me ask you this. Uh, can each one of you describe? You, you've talked about your priorities. Can you give us a sense of the community activities in which you have specifically been involved, leading up to your decision to run? That would um, be relevant to your priorities or your sense of community needs? Uh, Randy?
In uh, two thousand eighteen, I volunteered to serve on a neighborhood committee on Riverside. This committee negotiated a compromise with the developer that reduced the proposal from a million and a half square feet to a million square feet. We worked tirelessly on behalf of the residents of Auburndale and Lower Falls. During this time, I thought it was interesting that my opponent opposed the reduction in this, in this development because it meant a reduction in total number of housing. We fought to increase the percentage of space that was allocated to housing. We succeeded in increasing it from fifty percent to sixty-two percent. This is the kind of approach that I will take, and it's a clear difference in approach between me and my opponent.
Doris Ann, uh, do you want to rebut that and, but then talk about the community activities in which you have uh, been intimately involved?
Well, Engine Six um, is one of the, one of the organizations that I've been a member of, in fact, was a founding member of. And Engine Six advocates for more housing and particularly for more affordable housing. So uh, we talk with developers. We try to get, you know, more three-bedroom fa, uh, three-bedroom units that will support families. And um, so, so this has taken up a lot of my time over the last ten years or so. Um, I also am um, a, uh, one of the managers of what's called the Harwood Fund. The Harwood Fund uh, is a fund that was uh, left as a bequest to my church, the United Parish of Auburndale, uh, many years ago. And uh, the purpose of the fund was to assist Auburndale residents in need. So I have a partner at the church with whom I collaborate. And uh, the two of us work with social workers. And we can give relatively small, uh, not huge amounts of money uh, to people who, in Auburndale, who are residents of Auburndale, who are having hard times in their lives. And, you know, maybe they can't pay the rent this month, or um, maybe their car needs a repair and they don't have the money to repair it, but they need the car to go to work. Um, so at any rate, uh, my colleague and I uh, deal with those questions and are able to help people out a lot, many times.
Uh, there was one question that I wanted to ask you that was related to zoning and housing. And even though it's kind of out of order, I'd like to return to it nonetheless, so please forgive me. Um, the whole subject of uh, McMansions. And I know we've heard a lot of concern about affordable housing. Uh, all over the city, we see developers tearing down naturally affordable homes, what we used to call starter homes, access into the housing market. Um, is there a role for city government in regulating McMansionization? Uh, let's ask um, Doris Ann first.
Um, you know, you're getting into a tricky area here of how much the government can get into uh, regulating what's, you know, kind of a, an industry. And uh, I'm not sure how much we can do. We do uh, certain things like require when there is a large building requires a certain amount of affordable housing in that multifamily home. Uh, but if you're talking about an individual's right to do a McMansion, I'm not sure that the city actually has much leeway to regulate how big that can be. Um, in, there are zoning regulations that will apply in certain cases. Um, but, you know, it's tricky when you try to regulate the free market.
Randy, do you agree with that?
Well, I agree that the market is a powerful force. And Newton is a desirable place to live. So the value of our land has gone up dramatically. And in a way, that's a good thing. That, that indicates the kind of city that we live in. But there are things that we can do to identify and preserve naturally affordable housing. We can't prohibit it. It's private property, and people can still tear it down. But we can look at the side setbacks. We can set side back, side setback um, um, metrics that will make it a little less likely that this happen. And I wish that the city council would be focusing on this in it while it also looks at all these village center uh, rezoning proposals.
Thank you. Uh, it is time for closing remarks. I'd like to hear from each of you why you think that you are the best person to represent Ward Four on the city council, and we will start with Randy.
My name's Randy Block. I'm seeking to be your Ward Four City Councillor. I've knocked on just about every door in this neighborhood. And the people who answer the doors have a lot of concerns. They're concerned about overdevelopment. They're concerned about the quality of schools. They're concerned about traffic. They're concerned about something like the Turtle Lane Development that's been an eyesore for six or seven years now. This city can do better. The city must do better. And if elected as your city councillor, I will be a link between the constituents who have these concerns and the city departments that are here to respond to it. That's my goal as a potential city councillor, and I ask for your vote on November seventh.
Doris Ann?
So I know as a community, we share the same goals. We all want a city that offers excellent schools, interesting and varied restaurants and services, parks and trails, and a range of housing options for all of our residents. Um, as a community, we value human dignity, social justice, and progressive ideals. As your city councillor, I will work to make sure our policies reflect those values. I am proud that I've been endorsed by Representative Kay Khan, thirteen of the current city councillors, as well as Progressive Newton, voters for Up Vibrant Newton, the Gun Violence Prevention Collaborative, and Engine Six. And just so you know, I stepped down from the leadership team of Engine Six when I decided to run for office. And I believe I'll be an effective collaborative member of the city council. I hope I can count on your vote on November seventh.
Thank you very much, Randy and Doris Ann. A quick but important note that was recently called to my attention. The printing of the November ballots is a little confusing. The ward councillor for each of the wards is at the end of the school committee race on the back of the ballot, but it's not separated from the school committee race. So. but it's not separated from the school committee race. So look for your ward councillor in the least obvious position on the ballot. Thanks so much to the candidates for setting aside this time to reflect on the important issues facing the city. Thanks to your will, thanks for your willingness to put yourself out there. And thanks to the area councils who planned the logistics of this series of debates, then planned them again, and yet again. And for those of you who just can't get enough of this, tomorrow we'll hear from candidates in three races. Ward councillors from Wards Two and Six and councillor at large from Ward Six. Till then, have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.